Emina Twentechetina, la hesletun Guam is back from recess. We are again on second reading. We are on bill number seven dash thirty-seven COR. And we were on the sponsor closing on the bill. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Si, deus massi, Madam Chair. And I want to thank you for accommodating the recess that we took over lunch because I wanted to ensure that I got before I close. And part of my closing is to include an amendment, Madam Chair, that, you know, sometimes perfection in one person's eyes is the enemy of good and accomplishing what really is the true intention of legislation. And after hearing some comments on the floor, understanding while to me, changing from misdemeanors to fines is a good way to go. But I do, you know, remember that there was a court case in the Supreme Court and it was ruled in favor of the quarantine. I also remember a lot of dismissals, you know, of individuals from quarantine with judges hearing cases whereby there was, you know, also a lack of quality, I guess, representations in terms of what the Attorney General's office at the time or some of the other reasonings were. So it kind of goes back and forth, but you know, I really want to preserve the true intention in this bill. So Madam Speaker, this time I should be in the drive and I ask for Sergeant Arms to please pass out the amendment for my colleagues. Very simple amendment essentially just goes in and takes everything related to quarantine and strikes it through. That way, the current law as it's written will remain, you know, as it's codified. And in the end of the amendment, Madam Speaker, it of course makes the obligatory to allow legislative counsel to make technical corrections to the bill and title to reflect the changes. And so at this time, Madam Speaker, that is the amendment to remove sections five, six, and seven in order to retain the issue of misdemeanor on issues regarding quarantine.
All right, there's been an amendment that's been passed out. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? To speak on the amendment? Oh, sorry, copies are still being passed. I'll wait one minute. All right, the amendment has been passed out. So on the amendment, please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized. Senator Titigui on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. I stand in support of this amendment. I understand the reasoning that was mentioned by a prior colleague about the concern about the penalties, you know, put in place. And I think this is a good compromise to move forward what is considered this bill to be something that is a proactive approach moving forward and to be able to, well, you know, it's a bill that gets all the, you know, the branches of government to work together, you know, that it's a bill that does that most likely. But I understand, you know, prior even you mentioned, Madam Speaker, your concern about this section in the bill. And well, it's very self-explanatory. It takes away the focus from what we're really trying to do from this bill, and that is to have the agent, the government of Guam, to actually work together in tandem moving forward. So I have no objection to this amendment. I think it's a good one, a good compromise. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there any Senator who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I have to echo my colleague Senator Titigui's remarks on this. I agree with him wholeheartedly. I am pleased, and I support the amendment, of course. It has, I think, answered the mail as far as the concern is this, you know, sixty days, thirty days. So Senator Barnett submitted an amendment, so we've resolved that problem, ma'am. And I believe, and I think you'll agree, that the concerns you raised, the Speaker raised when she was speaking, I think, are addressed adequately in this amendment. That being the case, you know, we took care of the clock and we've taken care of proposed penalties or not penalties. It seems like we've answered the mail and I look forward to this. I'm doing a head count and I look forward to this passing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator St. Augustine, you are recognized.
No, Madam Speaker, I just need the author to reiterate and maybe justify the amendment. A lot has strayed through. Maybe send this back to committee and redo it all and then come back and then we can take a look at it again. But if he can explain, then we can move on.
All right. Would the author yield to that question?
I do yield, Madam Speaker, and I respect the comments of the previous Speaker in yielding. Madam Speaker, this basically just puts the law back to where it was in this section. It was a substantive change to move from a misdemeanor to a $25 fine. It was something that I myself and others, once again, in talking about the experiences of quarantine and those who were discussing, you know, what the issues were as far as how they felt quarantine was being managed. But I don't think that that's worth the debate in this effort, given the operative sections of the bill and what we're trying to accomplish. So actually, for formatting purposes, Madam Speaker, this is very appropriate in germane. It basically re-codifies or remains codified what's codified in law as those violations with regard to, you know, quarantine are misdemeanors, remain as misdemeanors, technical corrections are done, and we move on. I mean, similar to the sixty days, you know, the thirty days going to sixty days. I mean, it's all within the operative language and the operative intent of the bill because the bill is amending a law. Emergency powers are already a law. It's just a matter of how we're approaching it. So I think that's completely unnecessary, Madam Chair, to move the bill back to committee for this purpose when this is very sufficient with regard to returning, you know, this amendment appropriately, just simply removing this section of the bill which keeps the public law as it was originally written for this section. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator St. Augustine, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, when I stated possibly go back, it's referring to what had happened at the public hearing. Is this all germane to remove something that was never intended or foreseen? Because I know that originally, when it was first introduced, very good intention of the author, what he wanted to do, what he recommended he should do, and that was probably what was said at the public hearing. When you start changing in the middle of a race, maybe you need to go back and start the race again one more time. Restart it, take a look at it, make sure that everything's germane. Was that discussed by the public? Did the public understood what you're gonna, what you end up doing on the floor? Because once we get to the floor, it doesn't matter. Doesn't matter if they heard it or not. We as a body can decide it. But if we want to keep within the intent of how the bill was written, and I, no true objection to it, but I'm just saying, if it starts to fade away, and that's why I brought up, then maybe send it back to committee. I'm not proposing that to the author, but I'm just saying, just consider it. And that's why I just wanted to know what was the, and there's plenty paragraph for me, you, really, think about it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, would anyone like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then sponsor may close on the amendment.
I'm appreciative of the dialogue, Madam Speaker, so I'd like to just send the amendment down now and finish closing on the bill.
All right, so we're going to take a vote now on the amendment. All in favor of the, or sorry, is there any objection to the amendment? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Amendment passes. All right, you're still closing, Senator Duñez.
Madam Chair, I want to first and foremost thank all of my colleagues for the spirited discussion on bill seven thirty-seven. I want to thank those who spoke in favor, those who made the bill better. I want to start once again by understanding why my colleague made the possible recommendation of sending this back, but I want to reiterate so that the listening public understands this is the correct way to return, you know, to keep intact what's in the law already. Because if you look at the original amendment, it lined through and struck certain sections. So in order to do this in a clean way, we removed this, which means all this language is still in the law. It's just the amendments that were proposed have been removed. So I just hope that people can understand that instead of it being $25 for violations of quarantine, it is going to remain as a misdemeanor which was the law to begin with. Madam Speaker, you know, during the discussion on the bill, I just wanted to reiterate in my closing on some of the concerns that were brought to bear. Madam Speaker, this bill, once again, what it does and what it doesn't do, this bill does not take away any powers that the governor has, and it does not question science and in terms of what things might be happening when a pandemic ensues. It simply puts in place co-equal checks and balance in our government so that our legislature, as one of my good colleagues said, the first branch of government, has a say and operative reasoning to moving forward. You know, Madam Speaker, in this session alone, in only six and a half months, we've had three emergency sessions. I am so proud of this body demonstrating at a moment's notice that we understand what our job is and it's not a problem to get it done. Madam Speaker, in the thirty-six Guam Legislature, when the administration did come down, when there was a resolution and a proposal to terminate the public health emergency, we were here for about a day and a half. People disagreed and disagreed, the vote went down, the termination was not done, it maintained, and we moved forward. That's what the legislative body does. There was, there was, there was no disruption of government, you know, did the maintenance guy need to come down here? No. You know, did the dishwasher need to come down here? No. Who came down here? Civil defense. Civil defense is the operative agency that runs and operates emergencies when we are in an emergency. We talked to the officials, we got information. By the time we were done with that conversation, Madam Speaker, for those who could recollect, we really only came down to two things that needed to continue going forward. Unless you wanted to continue to suspend the open government law, unless you wanted to continue to suspend checks and balances when it came to emergency procurement, unless you wanted to continue to allow the picking of winners and losers with businesses and all the other things we talked about, unless you wanted to continue. And I had a good conversation over the lunch hour with one of my religious advisors who said, Chris, I just hope you understand when you were speaking on the floor, the churches were not railing against the government saying, we want to go into mass tomorrow after the announcement of the pandemic. The reason why the priest went on Barnett's show and one of our good senators and went on and started pushing back was because restaurants were opening, because stores were opening, because things were happening. And it was like, wait a minute, all these things can open, but we can't worship? They're reasonable people. Even though they could have cited the fact that church and state doesn't start and stop at the door, did they have those rights? But it was the unreasonableness why they started to go on and say, we are complying and we are going to open our churches again. Madam Chair, I don't see, I'm finding it hard to understand why we're almost afraid of ourselves. We're afraid of our ability when we've demonstrated it time and time and time again, particularly in this thirty-seven Guam Legislature, that we can move when we need to move. And sometimes in the good old Midwest, we can get her done. So I just hope that as we go forward to the voting file, that there would be that faith in our institution, that faith in us as a legislature to clearly understand when we need to act, convene if we had to for twenty minutes, to pass a resolution to continue an emergency, this should be no problem. I think we're capable of being the most, some of the most reasonable people in government. But when the opposite exists, why don't we go in and fix something that we've already tested? And as I might say, Madam Speaker, I could almost understand if some of those individuals in their heart of hearts and their souls believed in the thirty-six Guam Legislature that, man, I just can't take that risk because we're in the public health emergency and this may terminate it. Well, you know what? We're not there now because we don't have a public health emergency right now. We don't have that hanging over our head. We don't have a situation where a chief executive can say, you know what, you know why you don't have those goodies anymore? Go down there and talk to those fifteen individuals, those pesky people, they did this. We don't have that. We're fixing the law in a time where there is general consensus from a lot of folks that it needs fixing, and we're not doing it under any cloud of having to lose anything. I pray that that small amount of reason, as I consider it, actually, I consider it large, some people may consider it small, may prevail over us to pass this legislation, and I ask for my colleagues' consideration. Madam Speaker, this time I'd like to add cosponsors to the bill, starting with the request from Senator DeJuan early on to be the number two on this bill, and then Frank Blas Jr., Senator Tom Fisher, and Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Titigui, and then also Senator Chris Barnett, in that order, and anybody else, or Senator St. Nicholas, of course, one of the first individuals who expressed his support for this bill. And I want to thank you for that even before we had the discussion, when you saw the reasonableness to the bill. Thank you, Senator, and welcome aboard to be a cosponsor.
All right, on that motion for cosponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Once again, Madam Speaker, I want to thank the body for all the great deliberation on this bill, and I will go now and light some candles and see what happens. Si, deus massi.
Si, deus massi, Senator. All right, on that motion to place the bill number seven dash thirty-seven COR as amended by the committee and amended on the floor into the third reading file, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. We're now on bill number twenty-eight dash thirty-seven COR. Senator Roy Canata, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I move to place bill twenty-eight dash thirty-seven COR introduced by myself, Roy Anthony Benavente Canata, and cosponsor by Senators William A. Parkinson, Dwayne T. D. St. Nicholas, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations. It is an act to add to Article Three, Chapter Eighteen, Title One, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Adopting a Standardized Typeface for Government of Guam into the Third Reading File, and I would like to speak on the measure.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill is an easy bill which aims to promote a more accessible government by standardizing fonts in forms and other documents for persons with disabilities. Bill twenty-eight dash thirty-seven helps the government meet its obligations to ensure that any one person can access and understand documents, reports, communications from the government of Guam. The bill intends to adopt accessible fonts to aid in this effort. Persons with certain disabilities may encounter difficulties when using optical character recognition technology or screen readers with Times New Roman. This font may also be, may also cause recognition problems for individuals with learning disabilities. According to the U.S. Center of Disease Control, one in four people in Guam may have a disability, with sixteen percent of them having either cognitive or vision impairment. This is why it is essential that as legislators, we prioritize accessibility for all individuals with accessible fonts, character spacing allowing for increased legibility of documents leading to a better understanding of what is being communicated. On April sixteen, a public hearing was held to discuss this piece of legislation. Through this bill, we aim to create an inclusive environment where everyone can have the same opportunities and access to information. I believe that adopting this standardized typeface, we can make a difference and improve our quality of life for all the citizens of Guam, especially those with disabilities. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Fisher, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I rise in support of the bill based on personal experience, and I think that probably other veterans will join me in this. The Department of Defense has used uniform typefaces since forever for a very good reason. They want across the fleet anyway, they wanted people to be able to read the bills and read them, or read the communications and read them easily, and it works very well. So I support this very much. It's going to avoid us having goofy typefaces all from various divisions in the government. And I commend the author for submitting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, anyone on the bill, Senator Parkinson, then Senator Titigui, then Senator St. Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill. As an emergency services worker in a previous life, I understand the need for standardizing the processes so that when you're having interagency or in our case, federal overlap, we want to make sure everybody could read our forms. We want to make sure that it's accessible to everyone. It seems like a small thing, and if it's such a small thing, let's make this change happen so that everyone can avail themselves of the government services without undue hardship, without a yield of my time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Titigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I got to get some new technology here, but, okay. You know, bill twenty-eight dash thirty-seven, you know, colleagues, I understand the importance of the measure and how it speaks to government Guam levels of commitment to those with disabilities. And however, given ADA compliance standards and basic requirements for text-to-speech software for our website, I have to pose one question to the body. Does standardizing government font require legislative action? You know, I'm no expert on the matter of fonts for sure and graphic style, and I, and I'll confess that my staff and I spent several minutes, you know, discussing SURFs, if that's how I pronounced it correctly, S-R-I-F-S, before realizing that the measure didn't quite fit into the mix of juggling the reopening of typhoon-damaged schools or campuses, the pending arrival of missile defense system, and the fiscal year of FY twenty-four budget. My point is, you know, I support anything that makes serving our most vulnerable. But when is the body going to start being more prudent on our time? You know, could this have been done through an executive order? I'm pretty sure it could have. You know, will it, will it cost us any money in overtime or will it be retroactive? Will the websites, government-wide, be audited by a special compliance committee? Who is monitoring this? And are there consequences for non-compliances? So I do have a question with regards to those, those concerns I have, and I hope the author can answer those questions if he should yield. Two, my question is, who's going to be monitoring this and are there consequences for non-compliance?
Would the sponsor, is that a question you'd like to pose?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would the sponsor yield to that question?
At this time, the legislation is simply to rectify the issue that stands before us, whether or not there is an executive order. I mean, if it doesn't get passed today, then I guess I'll write a letter to the governor that unfortunately, we didn't pass this legislation. So I encourage her to think about implementing it via executive order. But again, I think we have the time to do it today, although that this is not an emergency substantive bill. It was already on the prior agenda, so we wanted to make sure that it made it, it made its final walkthrough. So whether or not it passes, it's a simple bill simply to make sure that our island operations are inclusive of all those individuals who are simply the most vulnerable population and as the oversight chair of disabilities. So I hope that answers your first question. The second question, there currently isn't any, sorry, the second part of your question is, we do not have any adverse actions for this bill.
Wait, wait.
It's simply common sense, you know, it, once it's, if it passes, we want to simplify all documentation and make sure that everything moving forward, whether or not documents are procured, you just make sure that the fonts are legible for the next generation or those individuals moving forward. If that answers your question.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Titigui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author, the legislation, for answering these questions and my concerns, you know, even with regards to all websites, government-wide, be audited by special compliance committee, you know, these are, we put a legislation together, which one that actually can be done, like I said earlier, through an executive order on something like this. But we also need to have teeth into this. Sometimes, simple things have a way of creating unnecessary issues and unintended consequences, not to mention more work, not just for us, but, you know, more so for the government rank and file who must, you know, add another law to their standard operating procedures and disseminate notice accordingly. And if, and if none of these extra responsibilities bear no weight or consequences for non-compliance, you know, why then does it require legislative process and codify into our ever-expanding book of laws? But, you know, again, I support this measure. Don't start freaking out, you know. I do support this measure because it does help those with disabilities. I mean, this type of font, and a lot of people don't realize, you know, it's a little more than just being, you know, uniformed. This actually plays a pivoted role in being able to dictate for those who have a hearing disability. And so again, you know, I urge my colleagues to be aware of many more cost-effective avenues available to us when we try to get our projects accomplished. So I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Chair, Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion, no, sorry, on the bill.
Madam Speaker, I thank the retiring speaker for understanding the prudentness of this legislation.
Senator Canata, yes, sorry, you don't have the floor right now.
Oh.
Till the closing? We still have others, yeah. All right, or did you pose a question, Senator? No. On the bill, we're going to take other speakers first? Yeah, so Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the bill.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this legislation. And while some may seem that this is not of great importance, others will understand the need to have this kind of legislation put in place. I remember once, a wise colleague of ours who said that you literally don't have to, you shouldn't have to legislate common sense, but sometimes you do so that things can get standardized or things can be in order so that everyone has a better understanding of how you get from point A to point Z. And in this effort, I just turned to my colleague who was retired military personnel and an esquire who's from the village of Talafofo, and I said, "Is there a standardized portion to this as it relates to documentation and all that, as it relates to federal documentation, even as far as fonts are concerned?" And they said, "Most definitely." And I know, Madam Speaker, I know that we don't have to do it, and I know that we can go through executive orders, and I know that we can even work it within the different agencies. But if you're looking at uniformity, if you're looking at a standardized form so that people can better understand or make it even at least better for the majority, then it doesn't hurt to give it a shot. So on this effort, I literally thank the good author from Baragada or Chigo who introduced this legislation because this is a good bill. And I rise in support of that and ask my colleagues to support the same efforts. Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi. Senator Siniklis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I applaud the author for introducing the bill. Even I have some difficulty now struggling trying to read government documents. I just arrived a couple days ago from a trip and had to fill out one of them customs forms. You just know how difficult that might be for some. And you know, I know the author is real young, and I encourage more young people to run for office and take care of us older guys who are having difficulty reading and other things. So I think it's maybe common sense to do so, but it's also a good thing to require our government to do something as good as this. It's a well-meaning bill. It's a good bill, and I support it, and I applaud the author, and I encourage my colleagues to support it as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator San Agustin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill to standardize how things are typed and put out. For many of my colleagues here that are not prior military and for the folks that are military, standardize. I don't care what branch of service you're at, standardize certain fonts you use, certain so forth. There's a way to write, and it's told, and you just do it. In GovGuam, they need to bring some standardization in place. Everybody wants to do their own thing and not realizing that some people can't read it, maybe too small, too fancy. Keep it simple. When I met with a compiler of law, she said, "Standardizing is the best way." I rise in support of this bill, and I thank the author for introducing this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, anyone else would like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill, Senator Barnett, you're recognized on the bill? Anyone else? Senator? Senator Perez, on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I believe in the intent of this bill that it's important to give access to those that are the least underserved and the least privileged of our community. But in looking at the committee report, there was no testimony, written testimony, from the agencies that oversee or assist those with disabilities. So I'm a little concerned that there is no feedback regarding this. Also, yeah, there's no oral testimonies before the committee. I think this is kind of concerning, especially if there's no feedback from these key agencies. I think it's critical that we get that before we move forward. The other thing that's missing in this bill is that it is prescriptive, so only sans serif, serif, Arial, Calibri, Seifert. And in doing some research, there are other fonts that are acceptable. Again, there's no laws that prescribe specific fonts, ADA-compliant fonts. In addition, there are other requirements, too, from other entities that may run in conflict. So I do support more accessibility. I think there should be a little bit more leeway in regards to perhaps additional fonts, you know, fonts always change through time. And are we, you know, making this more difficult for ourselves when we don't have to? And the thing, too, is that there are no laws in the U.S. for fonts, only policies. And so are we putting ourselves at more difficulty than allowing us more of the flexibility but achieving the same goal? So I do have reservations. You know, of course, I'm open to seeing if there has been any testimonies, but at the time the committee report was submitted, there was no feedback. So that's, those are some of my concerns about the bill. Of course, I like to achieve more access, but also give the government more flexibility in this.
Sisus Masi. Sisus Masi, Senator, on the bill. Anyone else on the bill? On the bill? Are you waving your hand? Senator Barnett, on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have to say, I was, I don't want to say unaware, but I mean, maybe not as aware of some of the challenges that are some members of our community face relative to typeface. So I too commend the author for addressing this. I just did have a couple questions, and forgive my, I don't want to say ignorance in advance, but I was just looking at what ADA recommends, and they recommend, one of the first fonts is Times New Roman. So again, I'm just sorry, but if the author could clarify, is Times New Roman a sans serif font? Is that one of these that would be listed here? Because in the ADA list of fonts, they have a, it's a pretty long list.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
I thank the retiring speaker for his question. At the time, the sans serif is a type of font, right, as well? So Times New Roman is under the ADA compliance. So my legislation's off of the Road Health Organization. So there's that comparison if we want to. Unfortunately, I don't know if I can interject this comment towards Senator Perez with the previous comments. I'd just rather us be proactive than reactive. If we can address the concern moving forward, then I think that's a great idea. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you. And then the other question I had, so for, just again, from a logistical standpoint, when we conduct public hearings and that type of thing, would we receive testimony from the outside, for lack of a better term? But would that testimony also, if we pass this measure, have to comply with the standardized typeface?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, of course. Are you referring to us when we submit committee reports and that kind of documentation? Or when someone?
Senators, please address the Speaker.
To clarify, I meant, for example, if we were at a public hearing for this bill or any other bill, and someone was to submit testimony, like Ed Pukaiwi of Jotni is going to submit testimony, does that testimony have to adhere to the standardized typeface mandate?
No.
Okay.
Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think I want to add Times New Roman in there. Because I know over at the court, I was looking at what font they use over at the court, and they do use Times New Roman. So just maybe if we want to, if the author has no... If he's okay with it, if he's cool with it, I would like to add just Times New Roman if I get a little short recess to...
One-minute recess.
Thank you.
We're back from recess. We were on a floor amendment by Senator Chris Barnett. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I also thank my colleagues for their patience. I know we kind of all thought that this bill is going to be like a wham-bam-thank-you spam. So again, thank you for your patience. I do have an amendment. We're kind of joking around here to introduce amendment, bring back cursive, but I don't think that standardized typeface. I think for us older people, though, it's not necessarily the typeface, it's the size, right? We're talking about those monopole books where the letters are that big. But anyway, in all seriousness, my amendment, ma'am, it's in the drive for my colleagues. And I amend Article 3 to read, "The government of Guam shall adopt a standardized typeface for use in all official documents, reports, and electronic mail generated after enactment of this act. Each entity shall utilize," and here's where I change it, "typeface that is Americans with Disabilities Act compliant such as Sans Soufiri, Times New Roman, Arial, Calibri, Seaford, or other." Because we wanted the list to be descriptive and not exhaustive, as there are numerous fonts that are ADA compliant. Ma'am, I beg the support of my colleagues for this simple amendment that I think really kind of rounds out and, for lack of a better term, casts a little bit of a wider net for this issue. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? To speak on the amendment, if not, Senator Barnett, you may close on the amendment. Waving closing. So is there any objection to the amendment? Any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Amendment passes. Senator Barnett, you still have the floor on the bill.
Nothing further, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, anyone else would like to speak on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill. Senator Caneta, you may close on the bill.
Madam Speaker, I move to open it up to co-sponsors. I believe Senator Fisher, my great colleague from Talavofo who owns goats, Senator, the great Senator from Odut Salampago, Senator Tina Rose Munro-Barnes, great Senator from, you're already a co-sponsor, brother, Gigo, Joseph Augustine, anyone else? Senator Barnett from Ipan Talafofo, sometimes. Anyone else? Senator Luhan, Tamuning, Tuman. And then can we call for the vote?
Does the clerks have the list? Yes. That's Fisher, Barnes, is it Joseph Augustine, Barnett, and Luhan.
Sorry, can we add Senator Frank Blass as well? The great Senator from Baragada.
All right, on that motion, any objections? Any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Canata, on the bill.
Madam Speaker, and I also move to move it to the third reading file.
All right, there's been a motion to place a bill number 28-37COR on the third reading file as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number 35-37COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to set aside bill 35-37 as amended to the bottom of the agenda.
There's a motion to move bill number 35-37COR to the bottom of the agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number 36-37COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also move to place bill 36-37 as amended to the bottom of the agenda as well.
On that motion, is there any objection? Moving the bill to the bottom of the agenda, any objection? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to motion that we recess until 2:00 p.m. Gupet.
Motion to recess until 2:00 p.m. tomorrow. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Recess until 2:00.